Okay, we do have two more. Our next one is going to be a Beyond Textbooks presentation by Ms. Burgos.
President Rola, Superintendent Abrego, and distinguished board members, I'm here to talk about our visit to Vail School District in Arizona. But first of all, we want to thank you for allowing us to go there. I believe we have a PowerPoint to show you. Next one? So, we were there Tuesday, November 7th. That was last week through Thursday, November 9th. We visited Empire High School, Empire K-8 Building, and Andrade Polytechnic High School as well. We had specific goals on every day, and those are the highlights that I'm going to give you. Next slide. So, meeting with this Vail School District, we wanted to learn about their technology and their flow chart, how technology is used in the schools, about their technology professional development, and about -- and then there was a time for question and answer. So, our takeaway was that all ninth graders are provided with a Chromebook that is returned pre-graduation in 12th grade. So, they're given this Chromebook in ninth grade, and it follows them until their senior year. Students pay a technology fee of $50 per year, and also, they're allowed to purchase insurance to protect those Chromebooks. Something that the Vales District does is they want to promote teachers from within into leadership positions. So, that's what I'm going to talk about next. Next slide. So, every school has a site technology coordinator. They call them STCs for the everyday-to-day operations with technology at every school. It's important to note that the STCs have all been classroom teachers, and they were recognized for outstanding work and how they use technology. So, that's one way teachers get promoted. They get recognized for outstanding classroom work, and when something comes available in their district, they're moved into those positions. Also, at every school, there's the student achievement teacher. They call the SAT to assist with onsite professional development and additional tech support. That person is responsible for collecting all the data with their ongoing assessments and helping the teachers identify the groups for reteach and enrich. They also have advisory, a technology advisory team. They call them the TATs. And they, there's one from every building, and they come together once a month to meet with the technology coordinator of the district. And they talk about those classroom concerns. And not only concerns, also solutions to whatever problems they may see and how to move forward with technology and its use in the classroom. Then, next slide? That is, that's the next slide? Sorry. All right, we, on Wednesday, November 8th, we went to the high school, Empire High School, and Edson Station K-8. The takeaways there were, we noticed every single student in every single classroom was actively engaged in their learning. Every high school teacher keeps a blog. On that blog, the student accesses that blog using their Chromebook. It tells them exactly what they're going to cover that school day. In addition, any assignments that are due, that school week, and any assessments they may be taking. That's how they communicate back and forth with their teachers. There's a lot of student talk. There's a short introduction to the lesson. The teacher sets the stage, and then the students work collaboratively to solve real-life situations. Next slide. Students' desks are grouped to promote collaboration and student talk. Students are responsible for their learning and for keeping up even if they are absent. They have to inform the teacher that they're not going to be there that day using the blog and Google Classroom. Empire High School has six periods. Really, they have seven periods, but one period of those seven is what they call the -- I'm getting schools mixed up. They have a reteach zero hour that's not included in their periods. That's first thing in the morning when students are engaged in reteach. And then, on Thursday, we went to Andrade High School. That's an alternative school. There you have school choice. So, you get to sign up for whatever school you want to go to in their district. They have seven classes. One of those is a free period with responsibility. Students get to choose where they're going to be, where they're going to hang out. It's really, it mimics a university campus. Students have to treat courses like a real job. They earn free hours. They earn points. All the pathways are purposeful. Teachers run the CTE classroom as real-world jobs. When student, when a student is absent, they have to report their absence or they lose their points and possibly the chance to pursue a certification in that area. Every pathway has a pathway advisor in order to keep students on track. And those are the takeaways that we took with us from our visit to Vail District. Any questions?
Yes. Thank you for going out there, but how are we going to implement what you saw out there here?
Well, those are, we shared with you our takeaways. We need to meet as an instructional team, and we need to look at what we're doing and how we can continue to grow our partnership with Beyond Textbooks in order to implement some of the strategies that we saw in addition to grow our pathways at the high school.
I saw that they have, I think it was, three specific people that do specific tasks. Is it three or four? Are you suggesting that's going to happen in this district?
I can't, I cannot at this point suggest anything until we come together as a team to talk about what we need and how to move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Move along, Mr. Rola. We do have one more. And we have Ms. Mary Ann Mosqueta, who's going to present on the Education of the Homeless Children and Youth Conference that you attended. Was it in Chicago, am I correct?
It was in Chicago.
Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, Dr. Rola, Superintendent Rola, board members. My name is Mary Ann Mosqueta, and I'm the Title X liaison. I have a small presentation I just wanted to present. Thank you for allowing me to go to Chicago on October 28th through the 30th. It was cold. It was beautiful, expensive, and I enjoyed it. My name is Mary Ann Mosqueta. I'm the Title X liaison. Carrie, who is also the state coordinator for Colorado, was the president of the NACY Conference. She, this year, she is no longer than the president of the NACY Conference, but she is our state coordinator for Colorado. In 2017, I went to the NACY Conference in Chicago. I went to several workshops, but one of the workshops that I enjoyed was an immersive approach to awareness from school to community. As a participant of this workshop, I am better -- let me put my glasses on because I need them. I am better able to communicate the barriers to identify homeless children at our school level. I recognize the effects of doubling up are hard to understand, especially for some local district staff. I increase understanding of many factors of homelessness, especially what decisions they have to make every day. Empathy, understanding, openness, nonjudgmental, et cetera. How to help school staff and communities to recognize aboard the broad definition of homelessness, and it impacts our students and their learning. We also experienced some learning games to work with the staff to get them to speak about and engage them in learning and solving problems. I also learned how to provide training to staff and to communities.
Next slide, Monica.
Who is homeless? McKinney-Vento Act Assistant Act Title X, Part C of the No Child Left Behind Act. The term of homelessness, children and youth, means individuals who lack regular and adequate nighttime residence. Some of these children are doubled up where they share houses with other people. Some of them live in motels, hotels, trailers, parks. Some of the students now live in cars. Some have lived outside in parking lots. There's many, many factors of how we identify students who are facing homelessness. Our big problem is the unaccompanied students. These are students who are mostly in high school. And we have, I think, about, this year, we have about four students who have no place to go, so they do a lot of couch surfing. Those are students that are very hard for me to work with because they are so needy.
Next page.
As a Title X student, they have rights. They have rights to immediate enrollment without school records. I am responsible to help them get those school records once we enroll them, but we cannot stop them from enrolling them. They also have school of choice, free lunch, school fee waivers, transportation. With transportation, we can allow them to get on the school bus if they need to, or we can provide gas vouchers, bus tickets. So, these are many different ways we provide transportation for students. Also, school supplies. We purchase school supplies every year with backpacks, and we give those to our students that are identified as Title X. Only, there's only two schools, Hanson and Kearney, who are uniformed schools, so we have to provide uniforms for those families as well, or students. We also do a lot of information and referrals. We, I meet with the parent and give them the information and referrals that they're looking for. So, sometimes I'm super busy and overwhelmed with some of these issues that families have. As you can see here, there's a number of students that I have identified as facing the housing crisis for, what, nine years? 2017, 18, of course, we only have 346, but that's just the beginning. That's our October count, I believe. So, as the year goes by, we get lots of families, but they're very mobile. So, the end of the year, our numbers are a little higher than 346, but lower than, than sometimes I would wish because they move so quickly and they move so fast. How do I identify the student? The student is identified at the beginning of the school year when they register the student. And also, we have this form here where they identify themselves. And I get this from the schools. The secretaries or registrars send these to me every day, and I then input them on Infinite Campus as Title X students, and that's how the number shows up. And also, word-of-mouth counselors, child advocates, they send me those information. Maybe in the school year, that family wasn't homeless, but now they're facing that challenge, so they'll let me know via email. And then I have to reach out to the parent and talk to them about what services we can provide for the students, and then I will input them on Infinite Campus.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last presentation, Mr. Rola.
Okay. We will now move on to routine items. First, 1.0 Personnel, 1.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for accepting the personnel action attached.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. Did we increase the sub up to $20 from previous?
I don't know if this, that fits under this one, Harvest.
I'm looking at it. I'm looking at a number right here in my package that I see, and it's $20 more than what the board approved. So, I'm asking, did the price go up $20 more for subs?
I believe the price you're seeing is $150 a day.
Yes.
The, the regular rate, sub rate, is $130 if they're considered a long-term sub, which I'm guessing this position is. Our teachers are paid $150 if they're in a long-term assignment is the rate. And that's been the rate for, this is the second year now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
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 Moving on to business. 1.0 Grants, 1.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to apply for the Mile High United Way Grant.
I move that I move that we apply to Mile High Grant, United Way Grant.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 1.2 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to accept grant funds from Rose Community Foundation.
Motion for the approval to accept grant funds from the Rose Community Foundation.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.3 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to accept funds for Pathway Implementations Early Action Grants from the Colorado Department of Education.
Motion to accept the funds for Pathway's Implementation Fund.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 2.0 Resolution, 2.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. At this time, Mr. Archuleta will read the resolution. It's on page 16. Resolution Number 17-013, Board of Education, Adams County School District 14, Acceptance of Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Audit Report. Whereas Colorado statutes require an annual audit be conducted of all funds by an independent auditor, Clifton Larson Allen LLP has provided this required audit. And whereas the audit report as of June 30th, 2017, is now complete, a final comprehensive annual fiscal report was provided to the Board of Education at the November 9th, 2017 study session. And therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Adams County School District 14, State of Colorado, does hereby accept the audit report of all funds as of June 30th, 2017, as provided by the Division of Finance and by Clifton Larson Allen LLP, independent auditors, adopted and approved this 14th day of November, 2017, Adams County School District 14. Okay. Need a motion for the approval of Resolution 17-013, Acceptance of a Fiscal Year 2016 through 2017 Audit Report.
Motion to approve the audit.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
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 Moving on to other, 3.1 Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion for the approval of in-state overnight field trip by the Kearney Middle School students to Mesa Verde National Park, Colorado, on May 21st through 24th, 2018, and their fundraising efforts.
Motion for the approval of in-state overnight field trip by the Kearney Middle School.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 3.2 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Little Giants Preschool to provide preschool programming for students in Adams County School District 14.
Motion to approve the contract with Little Giants Preschool to provide preschool programming for students.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 3.3 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for English Language Development Department to use funds to provide professional development participants with food slash beverages.
Motion to approve the English Language Development Department to use funds to provide professional development participants with food or beverages.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, please, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 3.4 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for out-of-state travel for six staff members at Monaco Elementary to attend a training in Moorestown, New Jersey on January 25th through 26th, 2017.
Motion for the approval for out-of-state travel for six staff members at Monaco Elementary.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. If the principal and assistant principal are going to be gone at, at the school, who's going to be in charge of the school?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
You got the assistant principal, principal, instructional coach? Who's going to be overseeing the school while these people are gone?
I'm going to attempt to answer, and Sheila, you may be able to help me, but my understanding is this has been modified and that there's only one building administrator that will be attending, and I believe that is the assistant building administrator.
That is correct. So, we budgeted for both as part of CDE's recommendation. For those reasons, we're going to have just one administrator out of the building who can help to bring back the information for the staff that they're needing.
So, this is not correct. So, we, so actually, this is supposed to be amended because this is wrong.
We wanted to make sure that we had it in there for both reasons, and should we needed someone to step in, myself or someone else with an admin's license would have gone over for those two days to support the campus.
Or is he saying it's wrong? She doesn't say that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you look over here, it does.
It does. So, any other discussion?
I do have a, I do have a question. If one of you two can come up, maybe both. Will there still be a total of six members going to this?
There'll be a total of five members going.
Five.
I also want to share with you that this is a CDE recommendation. We are in partnership with them regarding our turnaround. We are in the Turnaround Network. Monaco specifically. Tommy Amis represents CDE in the turnaround department, and she highly recommended this professional development for our teachers as a way to increase our toolbox, rigor, student engagement, meeting the needs of our readers that are below level. And she said she was more than willing to come, but we told her we can assure her that our board understands the need to empower our teachers and to look at many strategies in order to best meet the needs of our students. In addition to that, I want to share with you that it is part of our turnaround plan. It is the idea that we need to empower our teachers, provide them with professional development. We have the stuff. Now, we need to help them to deliver best first instruction. And this is also a way to engage them so that they can bring it back to their team members as they move forward to identify those areas that they want to implement. This is a very rigorous, by the way, two days as well. They're going to be working really hard.
I just want to ask, I think what we're trying to do is, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but do you need five or six? So, you can word it so that you do have what you need. Because you're putting down either the assistant principal or principal, could we just say Monaco Administrator so that if one can't go, the other one can go? So, you're not hurt?
I think, yes. I think what's really important to focus on is that this is grant money through our turnaround network, and in addition to that, we're not going to exceed the total amount. So, um, it will be one building administrator, whether, and I believe it's the AP.
Okay. And then, I thought I heard you say maybe one ESS administrator or?
Yes, that's correct. So, Ms. Burgos will be attending alongside to be able to support the Turnaround Network Grant and the work that they're doing at Monaco through their plan.
Okay, so you're asking for five.
Right. So, we did a high amount with it because CDE recommended that the principal and assistant principal both go so that they can support each other and the school. If it's our work to make sure that they're both there or at least one person is there, we wanted to make sure our superintendent's recommendation was for that they, for them all to attend so they can support each other and the school. If that was the case, then it's one of us from here who has an admin's license would go over to cover the two days while they're out attending, which is why you see it for six people. During the talk of it, our principal at Monaco has asked to be there, but should it change, we wanted to make sure we had the higher dollar amount for the cost of it so that we didn't come back and amend it.
Okay.
The dollar amount. We didn't want to have to amend the dollar amount.
Can you understand it?
Any other questions? Are you okay with that, Harvest? So, can we amend this to say who it's going to be? The number of the people that it's going, that are going to go?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I mean.
So, I have a question. So, if this is CDE recommendation that the principal and principal both go, then isn't it in our best interest to let them both go and then an administrator from here go cover Monaco?
It is my understanding, this had to be for the board meeting, but since we requested for both of them to go, I believe Dr. Luchuga, in the best interest of being a new principal and staff, that she decided to stay behind and allow her building principal to go. I think CDE's request is that we attend. And so, we are requesting from you to allow us to attend.
Well, I don't think there's no question that we want you guys to attend. It's just a matter of having the people in Monaco attend.
We can amend it.
I can amend it and adjust it.
Okay, we'll cover the building and allow both for them to go. So, keep it as it is.
With six? With six.
With six.
Somebody will cover the building. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, ladies. Okay. Grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 3.5 Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Strife for Professional Development.
I move that contract with Strife for Professional Development.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dreli? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 3.6 Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion for the approval to purchase resources in professional development from Kagan Publishing.
Motion to approve the purchase of resources in professional development from Kagan Publishing.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Have this district ever used Kagan Publishing before?
Did I understand you correctly that you asked, are there other districts that have?
No, no, have we ever used Kagan Publishing in the professional development before in this district?
We haven't used it here as a whole district, but we have sent teachers there to receive some of that professional development. When I say there, I mean there have been workshops in several When I say there, I mean there have been workshops in several of our teachers, I couldn't tell you how many, Mr. Harvest, but several of our teachers have attended Kagan Strategies.
And reading the, it's saying, Beyond Textbooks Consulting Professional Development to Support Teachers in the Area of Student Engagement is Highly Recommended, so what did Beyond Textbooks say that we, why we should use them, why is it highly recommended?
Our walkthroughs, we have CDE walkthroughs, I conduct walkthroughs, we have walkthroughs for MTSS, and Beyond Textbooks has come to the district to do walkthroughs, and there's a common takeaway from all our walkthroughs, and that is that there is not student engagement, one hundred percent student engagement across our classrooms. In order for students to learn, they need to be engaged, so one of the strategies that Beyond Textbooks briefly mentioned was you might consider Kagan Strategies. So as we, I, did more research regarding Kagan Strategies and talking to some of the leaders that have attended Kagan Strategies, we think it's a win-win, it allows one hundred and forty teachers to be exposed to the Kagan Strategies, it's not fragmented where it's one or two people, and so, our goal is to, once again, provide teachers with the professional development they need so that they can best meet the needs of our students, and this is one way of doing that.
Thank you, I have a question. So, how does that relate when our teachers at this point in time have a ratio of one to thirty-five class students, how is this gonna help our students stay engaged when we don't have enough teachers or paras to help our teachers in the classroom?
I, that's more of a finance question, but I can tell you that regardless of whether you have twenty-five, and I wish we did have smaller classroom sizes, or whether you have thirty-five, for example, one of my observations that I made, because I specifically, when I went to the Vail School District, counted the number of students sitting in classrooms, twenty-eight to thirty-five, no less, and students were engaged, so this is about strategies, how we meet the needs of all students, it's organizing our classroom, and I believe that it is a proven strategy that this is just one more way of allowing our teachers into, giving them more tools, I'm sorry, more professional development so they can best meet the needs of their students.
You also stated early in your presentation that each student has a Chromebook to communicate with the teacher, which our high school is not equipped with that.
But at the elementary level that I did the observations in, they didn't have the Chromebooks, we were talking about specifically high school.
That's what I'm talking about as well.
Yeah, and I, like, at the elementary level, I don't, I'm not saying I want that because I don't, I believe that we have to have, I would like twenty ratio per teacher, but once again, that is a finance, we have to look at our finances for that, and that is out of my area of expertise, we could only recommend it, but we have to look at reality. We are hard on that, this is just one, I'm really talking about empowering the teachers for best first instruction and empowering them so that they can meet the needs of our student, whether they have ten or thirty-five.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. L.
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, three point seven Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval for in-state travel to Windsor, Colorado for collaboration and professional development with another leading school to work alliance coordinator.
This is the swap, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
If we don't have a motion, then I guess we can act on it and does it?
I moved that we in-state travel for Windsor, Colorado.
There's a second? Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, it's a lot of discussions. If I'm looking at this, it says November third and fourth, two thousand seventeen, as we know today is November the fourteenth, so, and then if you keep reading, if I'm not mistaken, Windsor, Colorado is in, is it out towards Will County going twenty-five north? It says Colorado Springs, so, and then on November the tenth, we did swap, they had Colorado Springs for the same individual, and I'm just confused, you got November third to November fourth, two thousand seven, why is this in front of the Board of Education if it's already, the days done passed, and then it's in Windsor, Colorado, and if you read it in here, it's talking about at the bottom, the Board of Educations, County Adams fourteen approved overnight travel to Colorado Springs, so, I just don't understand why is this in front of the Board of Education if it is not, we can't even ask the individual questions. Did this happen already, is it late, or what is, what is it, why is it in front of the Board of Education, and it's the superintendent recommendation?
I don't think I, I don't see Mr. Robert Frantamalam here, but I don't believe that they have gone already.
So is it a typo?
I'm not sure.
Now, we approved the one on October the tenth for Colorado Springs, that day was October the nineteenth to October the twentieth.
And that's probably where they recycled the bottom portion of that.
Well, if they, even if they recycled it, why is it November the third to November the fourth, two thousand seventeen? Why is it the fourteenth and it's in front of the Board of Education and we voting on this? I don't, I don't understand.
And again, I apologize, Mr. Thomas, but I have told all my directors, if they have something on the agenda, they have to be here to defend it, and if they're not here to defend it, then, you know, it's, the answers can't be answered, then we just do not move forward.
All right, if somebody's here to answer and give us the answer to this, then I suggest that, well, we have to table it, to table it till we get correct answers, so I will need a motion to.
But we already have a motion on the floor and a second, so we have to go through that one first.
All right, have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Nay.
Mr. Dr. L.
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Rolla?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. Does somebody wanna make a motion to table it, or just?
It's no, no, it's denied.
Okay. Going on to three point eight Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to amend previous approved grant funds distribution amounts to Metropolitan State University of Denver from a hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-six dollars to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Motion to amend the previously approved grant fund?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. L.
Aye.
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 Moving on, three point nine Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to purchase HP Chromebooks to support Beyond Textbooks.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Chromebooks.
Second, is there any discussion?
Yes. Since I've been on this diocese for the past two years, anytime computers came up to this diocese, it was a breakdown of where those computers was going. This is one thousand and twenty Chromebook computers, so can somebody at least tell this Board of Education the breakdown of where that one thousand and twenty computers is going, and how come it's not in here?
Brandon Steely, Manager of Technology Services, the breakdown of where these are going right now is Adam City High School, Hanson, and Kemp, be a continuation of the rollout that we began last summer, we've got a, basically a three or four-year plan of what we're going through, as the board will recall, you approved about a million dollars' worth of funds for Chromebooks this year, and where this money specifically will go to is those three schools, and then I'm leaving it to Matt Schwartz, who's our Beyond Textbooks Coordinator, to determine where the rest of those will go. In order to purchase and deploy a million dollars' worth of Chromebooks in a year, we have to start the process early, which means I need to get these machines in now, get them image set up, prepared for deployment, and then February, we'll come back to the board, we'll look to do another purchase, and then we'll probably do another one in March or April timeframe in order to be able to have those when we're ready to roll out for late in the school year.
That's, that's fine and dandy, but that was not my question, how many Chrome computers going to Adam City High School, how many Chrome computers going to Kemp, how many is going to Hanson?
I don't have those numbers, that would be Matt Schwartz.
Thank you.
Do you have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. L.
Aye.
Mrs. Keitana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to four point O, Board Action, four point one, Board Recommendation, Ratification of Settlement Agreement with Idelson and Peterson Construction. Motion for the ratification of settlement agreement with Idelson and Peterson Construction.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. The money from the settlement, is that gonna be, is all the funds gonna be for the replacement of the asphalt at the high school?
You're saying the funds that we get from the settlement?
Yes.
That money will go toward the fixing the parking lot at the high school, the asphalt?
The entire dollar amount.
That's what it's guaranteed for.
Okay. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Dr. Leta?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. L.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to four point two, Board Recommendation, Sponsor Book Signing at Adam City High School. Motion to sponsor book signing at Adam City High School.
Second, is there any discussion?
Yes. Why is the Board of Education picking up the two hundred and twenty-five dollars and not the high school in here for this book signing?
I guess the reason the high school isn't, because it's a district, it's not just the high school, it's been selected to go to, to be held at the high school. The person that has addressed this is a nineteen seventy-three graduate of Adam City High School, he taught in the district thirty years, and he is an author of three books, A Teacher Growing Up in Commerce City, No More Green Chili, and then his new book called The Crochet Lady. So he wants to give back to the community and talk about the community, so he asked if we could, if he could sign at the high school, the previous signings have been at the Catholic Church, where else did he sign, somewhere else in the community when he had his first few books.
Do we know how many copies that he's gonna donate to the district?
Yes, he's going to donate some.
How many, though?
That I don't know, but he's going to donate some to the high school, I mean, to the district.
Because it kinda sounds, the way it's written, that he's donating the amount of books in lieu of the two hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, this is kinda what he's?
An exchange.
Right, exchange, thank you.
So.
So I'm okay with that, if that happens.
Yes.
So, so, this is just an out of the way question, but is this the only, where did the two twenty-five come up from? How did the two twenty-five, the two hundred and twenty-five dollars, so is it a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour? How did that two hundred dollars, two twenty-five come up for him to, for us to pay this? I'm confused, somebody can, I need, I need that answer, how did the two hundred and twenty-five dollars come up that the Board of Education is to pay for the two hours, cuz it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour? So is that means everybody that used the facility in the district pays a hundred and twenty-five dollars at the high school?
So because it's a board event, they're waiving, if it's a board sponsored event, they're waiving the fees, and the two twenty-five was, was?
Custodial, maybe?
Custodial, and we're providing coffee at the signing.
Coffee or providing beverages, okay.
And that's where the two twenty-five comes?
So, it's not broken, it's not broken down, I don't have a problem, but I just don't understand how this is put in front of the board of a hundred and twenty-five, now I'm hearing coffee, I'm hearing X, Y, and Z, but nobody is?
So it was a total dollar amount that was given, was provided through the facility usage process?
And who, who approved that? So?
Well, the use hasn't been approved until you guys approve if you're, if you're sponsoring the event.
Wait, hold, let's back up, the Board of Education sponsors events, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Daughter asked the Board of Education for five hundred dollars for some hot chocolate and apple cider for the high school, are they paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars for December the second to rent the building?
I can guarantee you it's being waived.
And I can guarantee you who is waiving it, who is waiving this?
So anytime within policy, if it's the majority of participants are for your own children, Adams fourteen attendees, the fees are waived.
Okay, but ain't that a Saturday where you're supposed to come in front of the Board of Education, Board Policy, not the principal, it's on a Saturday, December second, the Board of Education is the ones to supposed to approve that on a Saturday, not the principal, so this is on a Saturday, the Board of Education, which is in front of us, supposed to approve this, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, if Dave, Mr. Roll is sitting here telling us about the individual that's a prior student, that's fine and dandy, where did the two hundred and twenty-five dollars come from that the Board of Education is paying for? It's some, something ain't right there, something is not right there, and who approved it? And nobody's saying nothing.
Well, I don't know if it's been approved, that's why it's up, put up in front of us, we either approve it or we don't approve it, I mean, that's, this is the figure that they gave.
What figure, who came up with two twenty-five? That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, who came up with the two twenty-five? Who came up with the two twenty-five for us to approve? We know we're gonna approve it, that's not the problem, but the problem is, who put this number in here for the Board of Education, and nobody is giving me an answer? That's what I'm trying to figure out, where did the number come, it's two hours, that's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cent per hour, where did it come from, where did the number come from, who approved it? And this says, sup, Board of Record, Board of Recommendation, normally, this wouldn't even been in our packet, we would approve this consensus, just like Ms. Daughter wanted us to approve the five hundred dollars, that'd have been a consensus, so I'm still waiting, somebody ain't saying nothing, nothing, nothing?
And Mr. Thomas, I'm gonna respond, and I'm gonna apologize, because the person that would have the answer is Mr. Gianni Thompson, he was here earlier, but he's not here now, I can talk to him tomorrow about how we got the figure, but as far as I know, this figure would probably entail custodial just partially for the cleanups, that's the only thing that we charging for. That's the only thing that we charge him for.
So, we paying our custodial $225 for two hours to clean this up? To clean up a book signing? Is that what I'm, is that what you just, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I wouldn't say we're paying them that much for that hours, but it is part, part of the cleanup. I don't know how long it's gonna take, and there's probably some other costs entailed in there also.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Ms. Director.
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Mrs. Keaton. Aye.
Mr. Roll.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, moving on to Communications. Just like you said, at this time, we attended the assembly at Adam City High School, which was entitled, what the Latino, which dealt with, for our students to find ways to receive scholarships to attend the colleges and the universities. I don't know, there was about 40 or 50 colleges and universities that were set up tables throughout the small gym, and students were allowed to go and talk to them about attending what kind of scholarships they offered at that time. They also had a very good guest speaker, keynote speaker, who talked to our students about, just don't go and ask about school, ask about what scholarships you can get. And so it was very, he was very enthused. Then they let sophomores and freshmen go and visit the different universities and college tables. And meanwhile, another speaker spoke to the class of senior and junior class about what they have to do to try to get some scholarships. And it was good to find out, I believe, that they said McDonald's gives up to $200,000 scholarships, which makes it a very available to our students if they learn this. And I don't know how much information our students get about attending scholarship, or attending colleges. I do know that when I was teaching, is that the counseling department had one counselor who strictly dealt with finding scholarships for our students. And for some reason, we went away from that, so it was very, I think, very helpful, because a lot of our students are not educated. A lot of students tried to wait till last minute to start applying for scholarships when they should be applying at this time. So it was very interesting, the kids were very well behaved, and it was a good job there. The other thing under Board Action, I guess I should credit as Mr. Harvest brought out, I need a consensus, do we give Reba and her Winter Fest $500? Do we match 27J? So I guess we have to act on that. Is there a consensus to give her $500?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Joe?
Sure.
Harvest?
Yeah.
Okay, so my, so it's a consensus that we will give professional development money for their Winter Fest. Dr. J, you got anything to add under Communications?
Yes, just two things. Number one is I want to take care of business here, and I do want to read a student expulsion number into the record, so at this time, I would like to read the student's number. It's student number 1070547, and that student is being recommended for expulsion. Then, if I could just elaborate on what you were saying, Mr. Roll, for the rest of our board members, it was United States Hispanic Leadership Institute, and what they do is they select only 10 schools in the entire United States to go visit, and we were selected as that school, and we were the only school from Colorado. And basically, they're there to help all students, but they want to close the education gap in, in our community, and they did talk to the students about encouraging them to pursue higher education, and also the process on, on how to get into colleges. So a lot of the workshop just had to do with that, and it was very nice, and I think inspirational for our students. And thank, thank you for the board members who attended.
Any other communication? Okay, hearing none, then I need a motion to adjourn at this time.
So move. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay, there's a motion for us to adjourn. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Ms. Director.
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 8:00. Geez, I can't see.
23.
20, 8:23. Okay.